Call the meeting to order. Call the meeting to order. Please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, will the clerk call roll, please?
Counselor Bowden?
Here.
Counselor Elliott?
Here.
Counselor Fisher?
Here.
Counselor Grissom?
Here.
Counselor Reese Camp?
Here.
And Counselor Scott?
Here.
Thank you. Okay, on the consent calendar, we have the agenda for tonight. The appointment of planning commission Jeff Smith, new appointment, letter of support for the skateboard park, and the board minutes from the Bike and Pedestrian Committee of February 28th, and the Parks Committee and Tree Board, January 15th and February 19th. Was there any corrections or additions to those? Go ahead.
I move for approval.
Okay. We don't need a motion for those, they'll stand approved. Okay, at this time, we're going to take citizens' comments. One of the things, too, with our video, we are tied in now to the sound system for the first time, so hopefully it will be a lot better sound, and if you're addressing, please speak into the microphone. The council welcomes all respectful comments regarding the city's business. Citizens may address the council by approaching the microphone, signing in and stating their name and address for the record. Each citizen is provided up to five minutes to provide comments to the council. The council may take an additional two minutes to respond. The city clerk will accept and distribute written comments if you have them at your request. Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, I'm Bill Sullivan, live on Carolina. Okay, first question. In the budget for the police department, don't they have a fund or money set aside to recruit for help, instead of having to go to other departments to get their monies?
Not sure what you're referring to, Bill.
Well, in the paper after the last meeting or whatever, there was a deal in there that Allen put in that you went to the sewer and water to advertise for a chief. Hasn't their money in the police department to advertise for help and attend to that without going to other departments?
There are administrative costs that go across all different departments. John, could you address that?
Well, yes, there is money. We just typically have historically any recruitment cost recruiting an employee, we just, we spread it per the, what the HR allocation is spread. The reverse is true, too, if we're recruiting a sewer worker, that sewer worker is paid partially, the recruitment expenses are paid partially out of the general fund as well as the water fund, even though they may be working in the sewer fund and so on. So, it's something we've historically done, but, you know, it's not something necessary. I mean, we could, there's ample money in the general fund to pay for it, if that's what the council prefers, and that's an adjustment that's easily made between now and the fiscal year, so.
We have our budget meetings coming up next month, and we'll look at that.
Well, as I stated before, which is heathen hour from the sounds of it, it's been over thirty years ago, I ran an apartment, and when I advertised for help, it'd come out of my budget. It'd come out of the building department's budget. It didn't come from general fund, it didn't come from Joe Blow, it'd come out of the building department's fund. I was just curious. And then, why was Chief Sullivan benchmark changed horses in the middle of the street compared to prior chiefs?
I don't know.
By benchmark, Bill, you mean expectations?
According to the paper, if they're not giving us a snow job like politicians, the article stated the chief settlement had different benchmarks than the previous chiefs that they'd hired.
Well, with any position, especially chief of police, that each person that's in that position has different qualifications and needs to work in different areas, so each person's going to have a different benchmark, because they might need to work on this area or that area, so that would be in any job, really.
And in addition, of course, the goals of the department change, so.
Okay.
Why did Mr. Hitt change the rules for Chief Sutherland instead of, so I guess you asked me there on that one. Okay, well, a new administration when hired, are they going to put them back downtown where they spent all that money to remodel, instead of going out to the cop shop and raising all kinds of fuss?
As far as I know, the plans are to have them at the City Hall.
They will, so go to City Hall, okay. And Mr. Hitt, you can go to health and line as soon as you can for stealing. As I know, he don't recall.
Please refrain from personal attacks.
First Amendment, sir. But I know Mr. Hitt, he don't recall. He's a typical politician. And then, you can't afford monies, say, I wanted some information about such and such and such and such, and I had to go down to the City Hall to get the information and have your secretaries dig the information up. You don't have the money to do that, but the city had a million point four that they couldn't afford to do to give to the community college. So how can that work?
Don't have any answer on that.
I would say our partnership with the community college is a community investment. I mean, I think that's apples and oranges, as far as I'm concerned.
Well, as I stipulated before, the city of Lebanon does not owe Lynn Benton anything. They was offered by the Gilbert boys, Jack and Joe, before that college was started, here in the city of Lebanon, all the ground they would need for the college to start and further growth. And what they do, they worked all week to fancy ass, real terms, spent big bucks and built it over there, so as far as I'm concerned, the city of Lebanon does not owe that college anything. That's it, thank you.
Your time's up, thank you. Any other comments?
Yes, sir.
Please come forward and sign in.
I certainly will. My name is Sue Davis. I live at 1651 Hyatt Street here in Lebanon. Okay, well, I don't think that's going to be a hard act to follow. There've been many changes in Lebanon, and depending on your point of view, some of these changes have been positive, some of them have not been so positive, and I'm here this evening to share with you what I see and hear from others as being very positive. Budget attention has been paid to the Justice Center and the Lebanon Police Department, and I feel real safe in saying that the perceived intrigue that surrounded that building and those employed there was a topic of many conversations over a cup of coffee, maybe even a pot of coffee. Well, I've been hearing many good things about what is currently taking place at our Justice Center. Ral has greatly improved, and in fact, I felt it was important that I share this information with our current chief, and so I paid him a visit a couple of weeks ago. I wanted him to know that there are many in this community who support him and the positive changes that we all see taking place. He was real pleased to have this feedback, but he was real quick to point out to me that he has some very capable people who are working with him and assisting him, and he values them and trusts them, and that is so important. He said that he really didn't feel that he could do this job without their help. Now, we have three very capable qualified police officers who stepped forward at the request of this council. There Frank Stevenson, who is acting in capacity as a chief, Greg Burrows, who is acting in capacity as a captain, and Scott Bressler, who is acting in capacity as a lieutenant. And it appears from all accounts that these people who have stepped forward are doing a fantastic job. They have the respect of the people they're working with, they have confidence in each other, they have an ability to communicate and offer honest opinions, and it's valued. You can see smiles on people's faces, you can feel the attitude change that has taken place, and I wanted to ask the council, or give a suggestion, that you seriously consider offering these positions to the people who are acting in capacity on a permanent basis. When I was thinking about what I wanted to say tonight, there was a word that kept popping into my head, and that was serendipitous, and I wasn't really sure that it fit the message I was trying to convey, so I got out my dictionary and I looked it up, and Webster says that serendipitous is a fortunate discovery that was made quite accidentally. Now, we arrived at the people that we have in acting capacities right now through kind of convoluted ways and paths, but we got there, and so I just, I really think that, you know, it was a very fortunate discovery of very capable individuals through accidental happenings that has benefited the city of Lebanon quite well. So I just would urge you to seriously consider my recommendation and know that there is a lot of support in the community for what is happening now, in the police department, at the Justice Center, and on the council, so I just thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Good evening, my name is Elton Vander Voort, and I am not a resident of Lebanon, but I am representing a now deceased resident. She's the lady that I took care of financially, we took care of her, with power of attorney, I took care of all of her bills for the last ten years, and we had to end up putting her in a nursing home in sublimity where she ran out of resources, and the issue that I'm having right now is with the water board in Lebanon. And the concerns that I have, I had to make some notes here, so I didn't overlook anything, but I'm going to, it will take longer than five, so I'm going to summarize it. The documents that were filed on January 31st was a small estate affidavit, which said that, that at that point, I would be the executor of her estate, but before that date, in early January, I got a notice from the water board saying that there was a bill due, and after she passed away, I no longer had any power of attorney, which terminated upon her when she passed on, so there was a thirty day period that I had no authority to do anything with on her bills. I'd contacted the water board, and I was told that if I didn't pay that by the fifteenth of January, that there would be a penalty assessed on the account, and my comments to her was, I don't think that is fair, because nobody can pay the bills, and you shouldn't be assessing penalties on it. The other thing that she said was to write a letter to Dean Bau, that he would, that I could express my complaints to him. I sent a letter to him on January 2nd, and I was never responded to, so I never, he never replied back, so this kind of infuriated me a little bit with the idea that I'm not getting anything done. And this went on, in February, I went to pay the bill, that the water was turned off, there was a flat rate each month, and the water was turned off, so there could have been a daily rate established. The property sold on March 5th, we transferred the title over. I asked them at the water board, how much do I have to pay to get this cleared out? She said, we can't tell you, and then, then later on, she said, well, she said, we'll bill you for that, and I said, okay, you can bill me. Well, when the title reports came back, Tycor Title paid twenty-two dollars and something to the water board for that, for that water service that, for just the basic charges without water. I thought that was okay, but then I got a bill for a dollar fifty-four cents, and that sort of upset me a little bit, that they would even take the time to pursue that amount of money, and so I contacted the lady at the water board and says, is this really true? You're going to bill a dollar fifty-four for the balance on that account? And she said, yes, it is, and I said, well, what are you going to do if I don't pay it? And she said, well, we're not going to give clear title to the buyer of the property. My question is, how much did it cost to pay that, or for them to bill a dollar fifty-four on that account? I think they had better things to do, and I feel somewhat compelled, I'm retired from the state of Oregon and the US Navy, I worked for Oregon as a revenue agent, I issued liens against people and their property when they didn't pay taxes. When we issued a lien, we gave them thirty days' notice, and I feel that, I don't know exactly what the legal status is of the city of Lebanon when it comes to a bill that's not even yet due, as to whether there's authority to issue liens to pursue the collection against the title company when property is sold. There should be a method to bill the individuals prior to issuing judgments against them, if that's what it is, in fact, a judgment. So, it's been going on for a while, some of the people in the city here that I've talked to have told me that the city water board are hard people to deal with, and I certainly experienced that. The one bill in January that did get, that I, was billed for, that I said I couldn't pay, I talked to first Wells Fargo Bank, and they issued a check, out of normal process, they issued a check that I hand carried over to the, to the water board on the fourth of January, so that eliminated, eliminated that problem, but I did not like having to go under the table and do things differently, that wasn't part of the norm. Whenever a small estate affidavit is issued, we had the water board included on there, and the process for creditors to collect against a deceased person is to file a claim if they're not included on there, and since they were included, they were going to get payment, and they did get a copy of the small estate affidavit, so I was puzzled.
Your time is up, Ms. Elton. Do we have any questions from the council?
Yeah, I guess one question, sir, have you, is it totally resolved at this point? Well, it is right now, I've paid the dollar fifty-four cents, but it wasn't, it was paid under protest. And, and I had some of the questions that I had, I don't understand, I mentioned that, but I don't understand how you can, if it's a lien that's issued to collect the money from the title company, how those get issued, so that payments can be made to them and not by the, the customer that had the account.
I don't know anything about that.
I certainly don't know, we'll have to do some research on that.
Well, I know it becomes, it becomes a lien on the property, I mean, the bill is to the property and not to the individual. The timing of when it becomes a lien on the property, I'm not, I would have to follow up as well.
I'd be very surprised if it, if it happens very quickly.
I mean, a lot of times, a lot of times, title company will send out and say, are there any money owed?
What happens when a property transfers, the title company will go to the utility providers and say anything outstanding, and deal with it that way.
Because then they can clear title, because there's not going to be a lien that comes up afterwards.
Yeah, exactly.
So it may not have been a lien at the time, but they go, I'm assuming here, I don't know the specific situation, but the title company probably said, you know, city of Lebanon, what are you owed? They got a bill from the city of Lebanon, they paid that out of closing, so that they could make sure that they could guarantee clear title for the new owner, that city of Lebanon or any other utility wouldn't be coming back seeking a lien on the property for unpaid balance.
If I, if I had not paid the dollar fifty-four cents, sir, the, according to what I was told, is that it would get collected through the new owner.
Well, I'm not, I'm not sure what you were told, I wasn't there. I mean, I can say that I would be almost a hundred percent sure that a dollar fifty-four is, was sent out, because nobody actually looks at those, they're, they're computer-generated, if it's a hundred and fifty-four or fifty-four cents, they get computer-generated, but the mechanics of how that happened and the response, I have no idea.
Do the, the individuals that work in the water board, are they given any sort of training on how to deal with people, because they certainly came across, not just to me, but a lot of other people that I'm talking with here are finding that they're pretty abusive when they try to deal with them.
Well, I can, I can speak to you briefly, in years past, I've dealt with some folks in that situation, and I've never had anybody that I would call abusive. In fact, I would have to say the behavior I was, that was given to me was very, very, I would call technically correct, but I will agree with you that it wasn't very customer service oriented, and I left on two or three occasions in years past feeling dissatisfied. I, if the conversations I had ever had had been recorded, I don't think anybody could have found technical fault with them, and.
Our time is, our time is up.
I think, I think that, you know, things, I think in terms of our public and human relations, we all need to be aware of how we speak to each other.
The other issue on that was that, since we had no water service, the basic charges is forty-nine dollars and sixty-six cents, and I'm wondering why that individual could not have projected how many days since the last reading cycle up till the date that the property is going to sell, before, so they could compute that, so we wouldn't have these issues pop up down the road.
Mr. Vander Voort, could we have Dean Bau, he's in the audience, isn't he, say, could we have him give you a card, and you contact him and get in touch with him, because he can be the one that's going to be able to give you the answers and work with him on this.
Can I leave a copy of the letter I wrote to him?
Please, yes. You give it to the clerk, and she'll, she'll make sure we get copies.
I didn't know if I was going to pass those out. But I appreciate, I appreciate it, and I feel like that I'm speaking not just for the elderly lady who's now deceased, who we love dearly, is that I think there are a lot of other people that have similar issues here in town, based on what I've, what I've gone through.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention, thanks.
Thank you.
Any other citizen comments?
Well, on the topic of water, I'd like to bring up that our water rates are going to be increasing again in July, and, pardon? And I would like the city council to reassess the decision that was made four years ago about our needs for a water plant, and rate increases. Four years ago at that time, we were told that we need a water plant that was going to cost in the neighborhood of twenty-five million. Since then, just recently, September of last year, we were told that a water plant only needs to be about twelve million. Is the assessment proper? Is it actually going to be eighteen million? Are we going to have cost overruns? Are we going to run into a problem where we don't have enough water storage? So, at this time, I urge before, I know you're going to be coming up with a vote next month, probably, or the following month, that at this time, that the council reassess and maybe appoint a commission to look at what the council had been advised in the last four years?
We actually are going to have an open session where the public can come, and it's going to be all discussed, and it's all going to be on the table.
Do you want the water?
The rates, all the water, we're going to look at.
Projects.
All the projects that are coming up, we're going to look at everything, and it'll all be in public meetings, so that we can talk about it.
And are we going to put a moratorium on building at this time period, or rate increases?
Well, that, that's what it's going to be discussing. Before the rates would increase, we're going to be discussing that, to see if they will or not.
And Linda, what's the date of that?
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth? Here and then?
Yes.
Is it possible to do it later in the evening? A lot of people work.
I'm not sure, we can look at that.
Up to the council?
Yeah.
I would just say, if not, I'm not speaking for the council, if not, they certainly, council will certainly accept written comments as well, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do we know, and I'm asking, where do we stand right now?
In what sense do you mean stand, Art?
Engineering?
Designing?
Oh, design phases.
Producing the property?
Partially done, we own the property, and we have for several years, we're on helping with design phases about how much done.
Yeah, we don't have any design done.
Oh, okay, conceptual, I'm sorry.
We have an RFP out, we're consulting right now, several consultants to, to put a design together for the plant, that's out on the street right now, and we're finding that all the time, so I wish I could tell you the exact price of that, but we're looking at it all the time, to make sure that we do it for the change.
And we'll also be looking at the policies, like what was discussed tonight, so that will be another part that will be discussed.
I'm a bit concerned that maybe it should not be done in-house, and maybe we have outside people start looking at it soon.
The design actually will be done by an outside consulting firm, once, so once their design is, the design is done, and Ron, what's that, about a year process?
Yes, about a year process.
Then.
Staff qualified to do it.
Right, then the bidding process goes, so we really want to know the bottom line cost until the bid is, the bid goes out, and we get the responses to the bid, and, you know, whatever the price is at that time, that will be the price, and, you know, we don't have cost overruns, I mean, that's just something we, has almost never have had happen here, so, you know, estimate, what was your most recent estimate of likely cost?
We're looking at about a fifteen million dollar bond sale, which includes construction of the East Grant Street reservoirs on.
Okay.
We're in the neighborhood of fourteen million, that's what we see on the street right now with a similar sized plant.
Okay, so, then, I'm being, what I'm gaining on now is that we don't need to have a fifteen percent increase come July, because the previous councils, they voted on meaning that they needed to have a twenty-five million dollar project, and we, just recently, in September, told a twelve million dollar project, now it's fifteen million dollar project.
Well, just to clarify.
That's very confusing to everybody.
Just to clarify, the twenty-five million was other projects besides just a new water treatment plant, so it was a reservoir work, it was some work at the wastewater plant, it was a variety of things that were included, a new water line, a major water line, so there were other things included in that original twenty-five million dollars, some of which is now done.
I have the breakdown, and you'd said it was nineteen million for the water treatment plant, three and a half million approximately for engineering and plant and the management, project management, that was at that time in which we were faced with a sixty percent increase, this actually ended up, well, the increases that we have is about eighty-five percent increase. It would have been cheaper if we had a sixty percent increase four years ago.
Okay, your time is up.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm concerned about.
And we appreciate your comments for the meeting coming up in May.
We will be looking at that, well, in a couple of weeks.
Is it May?
No, it's, it's this month?
Two weeks.
Yes, yes.
Okay. It's coming up quick. Any other comments? Okay, next, we have a proclamation. Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton proposed that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind, water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and produce habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are renewable resources, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Paul Aziz, Mayor of the city of Lebanon, do hereby proclaim Saturday, April thirteenth, this coming Saturday, as Arbor Day in the city of Lebanon. I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day, to support efforts to protect our trees, woodlands, and plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of this in future generations. And this actually is close to my heart, because I was on the Parks and Tree Committee when we first had the first Arbor Day, and went out and planted the trees on, across the street from the Boys and Girls Club, so I remember that, so that's very neat.
Thank you very much, Mayor, for doing that.
Mr. Menjus, thank you. Next we have proclamation. There you go. Thank you. And that's John Dinjas from the Parks and Tree Committee. Okay, did we have Lena Tucker here? Okay, would you like to come up? She's from the Oregon Department of Forestry.
Yes, well, we're in the spirit of Arbor Day. So, good evening, council members, Mr. Mayor. For the record, my name is Lena Tucker. I am the program director for our private forest program with the Oregon Department of Forestry. I'm based out of our Salem office. Our program provides education and enforcement of the Oregon Forest Practices Act. We monitor forest health conditions across private and state-owned timberlands and federal lands as well. We also manage a small urban and community forestry program, as well as a technical assistance program to small landowners. So it's my honor tonight to be able to come to your meeting and congratulate the City of Lebanon as being recognized as a Tree City USA. And this is your eleventh year for this award. You received this award for activities for the previous year, twenty-twelve. This accomplishment has only been achieved by fifty-six other Oregon communities, and there are only thirty-five hundred communities nationwide that reach the status of Tree City USA. This award is a very important symbol, as you know, because it recognizes your city's commitment to tree appreciation and tree care. It shows the City of Lebanon cares about its livability, and recognizes all the important contributions that trees make to the quality of life in our cities. The Tree City USA Award Program is sponsored by the National Arbor Day Foundation, and we, the Department of Forestry, we administer the program. And this program recognizes cities that have developed programs to plant trees, care for trees in their community. There are four criteria that you have to meet to be recognized as a Tree City USA. You have adopted a tree care ordinance, you have established a tree board or a tree commission, and I believe yours has been in place since nineteen ninety-six. Does that sound about right? Mm-hmm. You spend at least two dollars per capita on a community tree care program, and you conduct Arbor Day or Arbor Week events, such as tree planting events and other activities. And you already stated the history of Arbor Day. Couple other notes. When we talk about forest, you know, we always think way out there in the hills and the national forests, but really, we all have forest in our own backyards. Forest exists within the cities where we live and work. And so, successful municipal tree care programs, such as Lebanon's, they really provide a valuable role model in Oregon. They spread a message to all Oregonians that trees make a difference in our community. They don't just attract citizens and visitors because you have beautiful tree lines in your main streets, but they also contribute to the quality of life. They provide shade, they make economic sense, they increase property values, they can lower heating and cooling bills, and reduce noise and pollution. So forests, both urban and rural forests, are very important to Oregon. So on behalf of the National Arbor Day Foundation, and our State Forester Doug Decker, I am very pleased to present your twenty-twelve Tree City USA Award, as well as a special Tree City Growth Award. And actually, this year is pretty cool, because you are now a Sterling Tree City USA. You have demonstrated growth activities for the past ten years, so you kind of get an extra bonus. And some of those activities that, that, you know, you accomplished for this award was providing tree worker education, sending staff members to the ISA conference and trade show, lots of tree care activities. You've done tree planting on private property where hazard trees had to be replaced, and you established a recycling program at your school gardens, a leaf drop site for residents. And those leaves were given to the school district to use on the school gardens. And so those are activities that show that you go above and beyond your normal tree care program. So with that, if you want a photo op, I'd be happy to get your flag out if you want pictures, or I can just present the mayor with your awards.
Take it out, sure.
However you want. I can show you all the goodies in here. This is the fun part.
We'll see it.
As well as the citizens of Lebanon to kind of show you what you got. So you're familiar with your signs, okay? So these go on the, you know, the welcome signs into the city. So these show eleven years. You also get your oak, maple leaf, maple leaf for your plaque, showing that this is your twelfth year. This one you're going to have to arm wrestle over, this is the official, you know, Tree City USA cap. It's always fun. And there's a pin in here, too. Tree City USA local pin. And so, and then here is your new flag, for you to replace some of your old ones.
Wow, it's nice.
There you go.
Very nice.
Yeah, very nice.
Very nice.
Very nice new flag. Yeah. The citizens see it, and see the new flag for your city? Okay, she wants to take a picture. I could tie it behind her. Yes, so congratulations.
Thank you very much.
This is very special.
Thank you. And I remember being on the Parks and Tree Committee, and those are the people who really do the work. And thank you, folks that are on there, John, and the whole group that works on that, like Rod and those folks. Thanks.
Volunteer committees are extra special, and especially the tree committees. I am actually the chair of the Tree Commission in Sweet Home.
Oh, okay.
And so, I always love this time of year and all the activities that we do.
That's great.
Again, congratulations.
Thank you.
And thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Always fun to do that.
Okay, next up is the interim city manager contract, be presented by Trey Kennedy.
Well, we had a public meeting on this. You guys discussed it. I went back with the, was in charge of putting together an agreement, and it is before you. I'd be happy to answer any questions, concerns, issues that the council may have.
And if I may, Mr. Mayor, give a little bit of background. I've known John Nelson the fifteen years I've been in Oregon. He's been one of the leaders during almost that entire fifteen-year period of the Oregon City Managers Association, a recognized leader of that organization, someone that had a, has enjoyed a great reputation, and is a man of great knowledge, as well as great people skills. He retired recently after, I think, eighteen years in Carvallos, but prior to that was about ten years in Pendleton, similar-sized city. And so I think he brings, will bring to the city a combination of knowledge and experience and skills that, and familiarity with Lebanon, that I think will serve our citizens and our staff and the city council extremely well. As you may note, the contract, one of the contract provisions is that he would, if you approve, he would start on April twenty-second, would have roughly, you know, between, roughly the twenty-second and the end of the month transition between Mr. Nelson and myself, time for me to get him familiar with our staff, familiar with our operations. I know it'll be an extremely quick study. And once he's ready to go on his own, then, you know, certainly would not be needed anymore, and would step aside and let him take, fill the role of interim city manager a hundred percent on his own. The contract is similar to the one I have in the sense that it's an hourly contract. It provides for seventy-five dollars an hour, but, whereas mine is sixty, but really, the total cost for the city is about the same, if not a little less, because the city has been paying my medical insurance, so he doesn't require that or need that. So I think his plan is, I'll be here Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, every week, some Mondays, some Fridays, which is kind of my schedule. So it won't be, I think the changeover between myself and Mr. Nelson will be relatively seamless. So that along with Mr. Kennedy's drafting of the agreement, I think it's a good agreement for the city and for the staff. And I know you will all enjoy working with him while the city searches for a permanent replacement. And by the way, I should add, he's definitely not interested in becoming the permanent replacement. So he has no interest in that whatsoever. So, so for whatever time you need him, to find the permanent replacement, he's happy to serve during that time, but not any longer period of time than that.
And I was talking to him, and he preferred not to be here so we could have an open discussion, and it didn't feel uncomfortable having him here, talking about him. So that was the reason he wasn't here. Otherwise, he wanted to be here, so, if we wanted him.
I'm assuming he's seen this contract and is.
Yes, he has.
He has, yes.
I've had a lot of good feedback from people who are familiar with his work and are familiar with him himself. So I felt good about him after having had several conversations.
Any other discussion?
The only question I had, the only question I had was item six, and the car allowance. And I'm sure it's a moot, not a moot point, but it's a picky point. I feel like we're paying him a fairly reasonable hourly wage, and we're also going to, from the way we just pay him to travel to and from work, is that standard operating procedure, or is that something that he requested, or how did we get to that point?
It is something that he requested, and I believe that he had a, he was also interim city manager for Dallas. I think he started in like a March or February, March of last year, and continued there to almost the end of the year. And that's something that the Dallas contract provided for him. I believe, you know, I believe it is fairly standard. I mean, certainly, I wouldn't call it universal by any means, but that there is a car allowance, if you will, for the travel between home base of the interim and the city that they're serving.
Do you have anything else on that, or?
No, I just.
Okay.
I was really impressed with, go ahead.
I hear Jason's point. I would say, you know, I read the same thing, and my response to myself was, you know, okay, it's an interim, it's not going to be real long.
Yeah.
If this was a long-term deal, we talked, you know, it probably would be something I'd look a little harder at.
Just be thankful he's not further away.
That's true.
Right.
I was very impressed with John Nelson and his background, and I think he'd be a very good replacement for the interim anyhow.
Maybe we can trick him into staying. I mean, I know he doesn't think he wants to, but maybe we'll just charm the socks off of him. We're like that.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the contract?
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion that we approve the contract as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, that we approve the employment agreement with John Nelson for the interim city manager. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Number two is Northwest URD Bond Reimbursement, Dean Bach, Finance Manager.
Okay, so the city, well, they, I proposed a couple of months ago for a twelve million dollar bond. So we're in the process now of going through the steps to issue that bond. What this bond is going to be used for is for some work on airway, to put in the water tank, is that on Fifth Avenue? Which one?
Fifth.
And the Fifth Avenue water tank will be replaced, partial, part of the Lowe's payment, some work on Oak Street, West Side Interceptor, and the design for the new water plant. So it's going to be spat out across all those different projects over the next couple of years. So the first step, anytime we issue a bond, is to do what we're doing now, is the reimbursement agreement. What this allows us to do is any money we spend between now and when we actually issue the bond, if it's a cost that would go against the bond, this allows the city to reimburse themselves from the bond. So if they go out and spend, you know, a hundred thousand dollars on tank design in the next month, then we can say, oh, when we get the bond, then we can reimburse ourselves. Without this agreement, we can't charge anything to the bond until the day it's sold. We're looking at selling the bond sometime the first week of July. So that's basically what this is. This is, this is a common agreement. It's, anytime a city goes out and does a bond, this is the first thing they have to do in that first step. You'll see a few more documents coming through in the process between now and July, as we get closer to the bond issue date. So if there's no questions, that's our report.
Do you have a question?
Yes, sir.
Could you review for us the criteria that a URD would look at to, for expenditures under that URD? What kind of expenditures, what qualifies as an expenditure for, within a URD?
Well, basically, you have to go back and look at the URD plan.
Right.
Every, I suppose the city can put anything into it. If it's part of the plan, then it's, then it's eligible. So if it's not in the plan, we can't spend any money on it. So if you go, you look at the amendments to the plan, you'll see a list of projects, and these are all listed in there.
Okay.
And one thing I should mention, is the bond we're looking at here, is we're looking at a full faith and credit bond, because we're getting a lot cheaper interest rate, which means it'll be issued by the general fund, but it's going to be paid for by the URD. It's, it's basically a full faith and credit bond. But it's not considered a GO bond, where it will be voted on by the, by the public. It's still a URD bond, but supported by the, by the city. So if the URD were to collapse and go away, the city would be on the hook for this money. But we'll have an intergovernmental agreement with the URD that they will pay the city back for the payments. And we do that to get a lot cheaper interest rate.
Dean, what's the criteria, the timing, that makes it attractive for July?
The one thing we're looking at, we could issue this bond on a little faster timetable, but what we're looking at is we have two other bonds that are eligible for, to redo them. And if we're doing them before July, they're called advanced refunding. If we're doing them in July, they're just called a refunding. And advanced refundings are a lot more expensive. So what we're looking at is doing them in July, so we can do the refunding on these other two bonds at the same time. We're evaluating those to make sure that they're going to be, that we want to do it, but it looks like we'll save some money on those two also.
Thank you.
Other questions for Dean? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
First of all.
Please read the resolution.
Resolution number two thousand thirteen dash eleven, a resolution of the City of Lebanon, Lynn County, Oregon, adopting a statement of official intent to reimburse capital expenditures from the proceeds of a borrowing reasonably expected to be entered into by the city.
I would move that we approve resolution number two zero one three dash eleven.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two zero one three dash eleven. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, Dean, you can just hang out there for a second. Approval of the auditor contract, presented by Dean.
Okay, at last month's meeting, the council told us to go forward with an auditor contract with Acuity Accounting Service. And so, tonight, I brought your two new auditors here, there's Cory and Glenn, so I'd like to have them come up. If you guys have any questions you want to ask, they're, let them introduce themselves, do that first, and then we'll get to the contract.
Well, thanks for having us. Again, my name is Glenn Kearns, this is my business partner, Cory Surratt. We're the principals with Acuity LLC, CPA firm, based out of Albany. We're, I guess, here to answer questions, if you have any. We're very excited, I guess, about the contract with Lebanon, being, you know, in the local area. We have a lot of clients in this area, as well as throughout the state. So we're very excited to work with Dean and his staff and the city council. So if you have questions at all, I would be more than happy to answer them.
Will it be you two, or do you have staff that will?
We do have staff, but it primarily will be us as the principals, which is by design. We're a smaller firm, I guess, size-wise, but we're small by design. We actually branched off, I branched my practice off just a little over a year ago from another local firm, primarily because I wanted to be able to provide more flexibility in, in how I service clients, and get back to working more when I'm with, with the clients and so forth. So in our opinion, it's a win-win situation, because the city gets to benefit from more senior-level staff onsite. And I think if you talked to Dean about that, he would agree that that's always a benefit, not having to deal with what I would call junior staff on a, on a recurring basis. So the faces that, that you see will be the faces that the staff is primarily dealing with during the term of the contract.
I'm sure the committee asked you, but you're very familiar with looking at municipality.
Absolutely. We currently are.
How thick and. How thick and boring it is, you know?
We have a saying that, you know, auditors aren't boring people, we just get excited about boring things. We currently audit probably thirty-plus municipalities around the state of Oregon and as not-for-profit entities as well, so we're well-versed in all aspects of municipal accounting. When I was with the former firm, we've audited larger entities, larger cities, counties, all the way down to small and special districts, including federal compliance audits that the city does not currently have, but, you know, if, if that ever came to pass, we're qualified to do those type engagements as well.
If you folk, go ahead. As you folks have had a chance to look at our, probably our city and talk to Dean about it, what do you see as the biggest challenge in our audit?
Well, obviously the, the upcoming bond issuance and the impacts of that are always challenging, making sure that that stuff is dealt with accordingly and accounted for because those reports obviously are submitted to the funding agencies and those sorts of things. We haven't actually had a chance to really sit down and talk in depth with Dean about specific areas and so forth, but the, the size and complexity of the city isn't, you know, overly complex based on other entities that we've audited and some of those sorts of things, so it's, it really is dealing with, the utility side, I would guess, is always probably one of the highest focused or highest risky areas in, in any city audit, just because of the, the volume of transactions and the types of things that you're dealing with on a debt level and some of those sorts of things. So I guess that might probably be the, the primary area that I see at this point.
Good, thank you.
There's the U R D component of the audit, I mean, you're familiar with...
Yeah, they've been around long enough, and when, when urban renewal districts and those things first came out, it, it caused auditors a bit of concern in a way, just because they were sort of new and no one was exactly sure what kind of strange animal it was and how it interfaced with the, the larger entity and those sorts of things, but, you know, it's not a, it's not a new entity, we're well-versed in both dealing with those on a standalone basis as well as how they're incorporated into the city's financials as well.
I've worked with them in an audit, they seem to do pretty well.
Any other questions?
We're excited about new, new faces, new eyes, you know, in terms of the audit, and so we appreciate you being here this evening.
Thank you. And we're, we're very excited about, and we, one of the things that is a cornerstone, I guess, of our firm is we, we realize that we are in a service industry. I mean, we, you know, we are technical in nature, but we realize that, that we are here to provide a service as well, that extends beyond just the onsite fieldwork, and we pride ourselves on making sure that we are available throughout the year for questions, for staff and so forth, because we, we really feel like that we're, we're more than just what you see for the, the two weeks or whatever that we're onsite, or we should be anyway.
Did you say where you were located?
Yeah, we're based out of Albany.
Albany, okay, thank you.
Do we have to pay mileage to come from Albany?
No, that's, all of, all of those things are included in the, in the audit contract amount. But I'd be open to that if that's on the table, so...
We're not offering.
Close for business in that department, for the record.
Thank you very much for coming, appreciate your time.
Thank you very much, thanks for having us. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll need a, we have the contract here, item number three, and we will need a motion for the approval of the contract.
I'd move approval as presented again.
I second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the contract with Acuity LLC for auditing services. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
Sorry, they're signing the contract, so once you sign it, then we kind of have it all done. So I brought them here tonight because I thought it was important that you guys all meet them, because you remember, I do a lot of work with them, but they actually work for you guys. This, this is one of the jobs at the city council, it's your job to hire an auditor and the auditor works for you. You know, they have more contact with me, but if you ever have any questions for them, if you have any concerns, I can get you their phone numbers and you just call them, because they do work for you guys. So, so I thought it was important you guys all meet them.
Thank you.
They'll be out here sometime in May for their pre-audit, so that's when they'll start this all off, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, number four on the agenda, no parking at Second and Sherman Streets, Ron Whitlock, senior engineer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. What we have before you tonight is a no parking resolution for the corner of Second and Sherman Street. Basically, it had been brought to our attention multiple times that there's a sight distance issue there, not necessarily sight distance, but a blockage when you have vehicles parking on Second Street for traffic that's trying to cross Second Street. We went out, looked at it, and yes, this is the case. It is very difficult to see when there's vehicles, if you look on the map, that are parked close to the intersection. We discussed this with the property owners, the Lebanon Racket Club, talked to them about it, they were okay with us eliminating that piece of parking to improve the safety of the intersection. So what we have before you is a resolution requesting that you do that. Can I answer any questions about it?
Well, I know I have to travel that exactly to get here and it's, it's a tricky thing to coordinate because you have to edge out and then if there's cars there, it's very difficult to see.
And pray, you pray.
Yeah.
Just, I hope nobody's serving now.
Yes, yeah, it's very dangerous.
Yeah, I'm glad to see this happen.
Yeah, me too. Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions, Ron? Okay, and, so we don't need, we don't need to read into that, do we? Or do we?
Sorry, yeah.
Okay, resolution, so you turn and read the resolution.
Resolution number 2013-12, a resolution restricting street parking on a portion of Second Street within the city of Lebanon.
I move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for the no parking at Second Sherman Streets, resolution number 2013-12. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion passes.
Hmm.
Safer traveling.
Yes.
We'll have our crews go out and paint that as soon as we get some weather to do that. We'll put it on our painting schedule.
Okay. And number five, proposed sewer lateral cost options for Jennings Street, Ron Whitlock again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As promised, I brought you back a proposed change order to, for the Jennings Street project. This is the project where the sewer line currently exists in the backyards. We are actually under contract with Armstrong Construction to put the sewer out in Jennings Street. What the, what the change order includes is a complete redirection of the lateral and connection to our city sewer main. I think in my original memo to the council, we were about, we figured this to be about twenty-five to thirty-five thousand. I'd like to say I'm good, but I think I'm lucky it came in at twenty-five thousand eight hundred dollars to do the entire thing, so that's the proposal. I know that you had asked a couple of different things, you know, as far as do we have the homeowner pay, and I leave that up to you guys to tell me how you'd like to proceed.
We talked about several things, I thought we had somewhat of a consensus.
I felt like we had a consensus last month, did we not?
It was more or less get the change order and see if there's basically the, if, if we want to charge the homeowner a portion of it or how we wanted to do that.
We talked about a payment plan.
Yeah.
Be a reasonable course of action for that.
If that's how you decided to do it.
That's just my basic preference, I think.
Yeah, we, in our minutes, it talks about exactly...
Page one.
Yeah, page four of seven of the March thirteenth, 2013.
My only question with the payment plan is what happens with the sale of a home and now?
Our stock takes.
We have an unpaid debt to the city for services provided, and how is that handled? Be a lien-winded? Be like any other utility lien?
Yes, paid off at the time of the sale, correct?
Or different.
It would be a lien of property, it would be a property that was paid off.
Right, right.
Did that give the homeowner some sort of choice in the matter? I can't remember.
Well, I mean, I think, I think what we have here is, is either, probably the best option, if you, if you choose to have the homeowner pay some of that, we could ask the homeowner if they can, if they could pay it now, or tell them that we can do a payment plan, I think we talked about a payment plan, or we pay the entire amount. Those were the three things that we discussed.
And the twenty-six thousand that you figured was us paying the entire amount?
Yes, that's one of the three options in the original, yeah. Was we either pay the entire amount, we pay a small portion, a large portion, or whatever that portion is, whatever council determined, and then, or we do nothing, we stick with our original resolution.
So this, this number from Armstrong, is that, have we already agreed to do, have we given this contract?
No, we have not agreed to do this right here. This, this is, this is a change order to the original contract of a hundred and thirty-five thousand.
Right, okay.
So this, this is just extra work. What we would do, what the original contract was to put the sewer lateral in and extend the laterals to the right-of-way, and what we're looking at doing here is how do we, how do we make that connection for folks? I know Councilor Reese Camp had asked that, that question, and then several property owners had asked, since the sewer lateral's in the backyard.
Have we talked to any of the property owners about this?
That's what I was gonna say, I would feel so much better if we could hear input from the property owners to say, well, of course, they're gonna say pay for it, but...
Sure.
Short of us doing that, because I think we talked about last month, that really puts us in a, in a position where if this comes up again in another area, you know, we've kind of set a precedence for, for this, but it is extenuating circumstances, so short of that, how would you have us handle that balance? And I don't know, I would just feel better at least seeing or hearing of some of the conversation with the homeowners.
My recollection, we talked about that a normal, you know, an average kind of hookup charge, if somebody's hooking up to city services, like on any normal annexation or whatever, if the service is available, and I forget what we said, but it seems like we were talking like a thousand, fifteen hundred dollars is kind of ballpark number, whatever.
Yes, that's probably, that's probably pretty close, you know, for the private side. If you look back at our lateral program, it's pretty close to that, the fifteen hundred, you know, it depends on, there's a lot of circumstances, yeah.
But we're talking, we're not talking two hundred, we're not talking, you know, three thousand, we're talking, you know, a thousand plus or minus.
The, the big kicker on this one is, is the redirection of the laterals and having to come from the back. Now, we didn't talk to the property owners, this was, this was our contractor actually hired or had a plumber, a licensed plumber, go out and crawled under the houses and figured out exactly where to take that without not, without knowing what the council's direction was. I was a little skeptical to tell them what exactly our plan was without not knowing the plan.
And did we, I, I'm so sorry if I'm not remembering, but did we talk about going up and then at some point giving each, giving them an out or some way to opt-in or opt-out? And we're, we're doing this now, we're doing this as a part of, and, and you can opt-in, or they can say, I want nothing to do with this, and we say, okay, well, we're bringing this up to this point in your property, you're not connecting now, oh, but we, but it's all in or out?
No, no, no. It's not necessarily all in or out, no. No, they, they've got options, we're not gonna cut the sewer off out there in the backyard. Basically, what we're saying is when that sewer line fails...
You're done.
We, we have no recourse at that point, so what, how do, how do we handle that with the property owners? And what we came up with was this, you know, there's, there's a variance of options here. I mean, we could do, I mean, for instance, you could say, well, the city's willing to pay up to the house and the homeowner, you, if you want the, the rest of it done, you've gotta, you've gotta do it yourself, or you pay for the entire amount. I mean, I, I guess it's kind of a, it's kind of a weird spot to be in because resolution-wise, we're outside our resolution boundaries, but it's also an extenuating circumstance with the sewer not being located where it's convenient to get to, and they've been paying sewer bills, so it's a tough...
Go ahead, please.
I was just gonna say, I kind of look at this almost like, if, if I'm correct, a property owner and I'm improving a property, I pay for sidewalks, for example, but if the city decides to come in and do something on my street and tears my sidewalk up that I've already paid for, they replace it at the city's cost.
Correct.
And we've always kind of done that. Well, we're kind of doing this to those people.
Agreed.
They, they had a working system, whoever put that in at some point did it in the direction that we asked them to go, they did their diligence, they did it, and now we're saying, hey, we wanna go somewhere else.
Right.
So that's where I kind of am looking at, why are we asking them to pay for a decision that we changed?
Yeah, in a normal case, we would, we would be back there and we would, we would go through the, the backyards and, you know, we'd try and replace that, but in this case, I, I mean, it can be done, but it would be...
But if we did, it would cost us more than those twenty-six thousand dollars.
I do believe so, by the time we bought sheds, fences and trees and landscaping, yeah, yeah.
So I'm kind of in favor of paying for the project.
I could buy that argument.
Well, that's basically why I raised the question, Ron, initially, and it's kind of our, our vision and our deal here that we're forcing them to do something that it's our decision to do, not theirs. So I would be leaning towards paying the whole project. I think, Ron, you indicated that the, the bid was actually well under the estimate that covers, substantially under, which covers the cost of doing this, so...
Yes, it does.
That's kind of where I'm at, Mayor.
I was just looking at the, the minutes of the last meeting and I agree with where Floyd mentioned the same thing, that the twenty-five thousand dollar cost was still below the next lowest bid, and I agree with Floyd, I think we should go ahead and pay it.
I'd like to say that we don't have too many of these out here, but it seems like we're finding about one a year, and now are there hundreds of homes on them? No, it's usually, I mean, I, this is an odd case where we have eight. Normally, it's one or two, you know, where, where you have a case like this, where we don't have a documented sewer line and all of a sudden we find it and it's plugged or broken and we have to go somewhere else because there's no easements and most people don't wanna wait around thirty days to get an easement where their sewer's plugged, so we try and do something a little different.
Well, there will always be circumstances, and I, and I agree with Councilor Grissel, the, the sets of presidents, but...
Yes.
I still think that it's really no fault of the property owners that we should cover the cost.
Cross that bridge when we come to it.
Just like we have before.
Yep.
So, the motion?
Consent?
Consent?
I mean, I think you could do it by consensus, but there's nothing hurt by doing it by motion.
Okay.
Because I think it's still within, it's just a change order within the original resolutions.
Yeah, normally if it's under fifty thousand, we wouldn't bring it, but since this is a, a special circumstance, resolution, we're, we're stepping outside that bounds, I wanna make sure that you guys were the ones that, that had the information there, and we knew where we're headed, and everybody's headed the right direction.
For consensus or motion?
Do you want a formal motion?
Let's go with the motion.
Okay.
Then I would move that we cover the cost of the twenty-five thousand eight hundred dollars that's required to do the laterals of the property owners on Jennings Street.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the twenty thousand, twenty-five thousand eight hundred for the proposed sewer lateral costs. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Next, Ron. Okay, number six is approval to submit local government grant for Academy Square Trail, Walt Winduski. Walt Winduski.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the City Council, I have before me today a resolution to allow the city to submit an application, a local government grant, to the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department for walkway and trailway improvements at Academy Square. This resolution is critical for us to submit the application. In the packet, you will have a map of the proposed improvements. It will make the connection between the Senior Center and Main Street, as well as the Senior Center and the intersection of Second and Academy Street. We see this as a great benefit to opening the sort of academy green, if you will, and also, we see it as, since these are ADA improvements, it certainly would be a benefit to the Senior Center as well. Subsequent to the original staff report, we did a little bit more refinement on the budget. I'd like to let you know that our budget proposal is actually $10,000 less, will be a hair under $75,000 to do the project. The city share will be approximately $20,000, $17,000, and that will be in-kind work, the balance will be cash. But more importantly, the library and senior senior board have agreed to donate $10,795 to this project. And I think that says quite a bit about the interest in getting this forward. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that the council may have, and certainly hope you do approve the resolution.
I think it's a wonderful idea. I'm glad to see it happening.
Thanks, great.
And this is going to be asphalt?
Yes, it will be ADA compliant. I'm not guaranteeing approval on the grant, please, I understand that, but I think this is an important grant to apply.
Well, I wish you would pass along our appreciation of those, to both of those boards, for their hard work and dedication. I think it's going to be a great improvement to the whole square.
Mr. Mayor.
Tree board, doesn't matter.
Any other questions? Would you like to read the resolution, please?
Resolution number 2013-13, a resolution authorizing the City of Lebanon to apply for an Oregon Parks and Recreation Local Government Grant for Trail and Walkway Improvements at the city-owned Academy Square.
Okay. Do I have a motion for resolution 2013-13?
I think I motion to approve resolution number 2013-13.
Second? Spent, moved and seconded for resolution number 2013-13. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Walt. Okay, next is a media communications policy update, and that's myself. I apologize, we did not get to meet in earlier April, but we have a meeting scheduled for April 25th, and then we'll report back in the May meeting and let you know what we've come up with, but we'll be working on things in the meantime, if anything's going with that. So, any questions on that? Okay. Number eight, the San Diego Enterprise Zone Extended Agreement Proposal, Trey Kennedy. Number eight.
Well, yeah, I could, I could go ahead, yeah. We're going to kind of stick Trey with it, but I guess I better do it. Yeah, this is, we've seen many of these, this is because we're in the same enterprise zone with Millersburg and Albany and Lynn County, that we, if it's an extended abatement, that is a five-year or longer abatement, the state rules require that all enterprise zone sponsors approve those abatement requests, extended abatement requests. So this is one you can see here from the letter from, or memo from John Pescone, and a proposed resolution in 2013-14 for a company called Metal Technology. And so granting these abatements in other cities does not impact our tax rate in any way. And so I would urge your approval of the proposed resolution.
And we have done these before?
We have done many, and the other cities have done a few for us as well. But, yeah, we've had quite a few of these over the years.
Mr. Mayor, I would approve, oh, I guess you have to read that.
We have to have a reading first. Was there any questions, any discussion? Okay, Mr. City Attorney, would you please read the?
Resolution number 2013-14, a resolution approving an extended property tax abatement agreement between the City of Albany, a co-sponsor of the South San Diego Enterprise Zone, and Metal Technology of Albany.
No approval?
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 2013-14. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Okay, wow, flew through that. Items from the council.
I have one.
Yes?
When Ron came up to address the issue, he was standing over there, I'd like to request once again that when speakers come up, that we get them up to a microphone, because what he said was pretty valuable.
What I also, what would be good is, I would like to see another microphone there.
I was going to be behind that suggestion, yeah.
If we could, I don't know.
Yeah, so, and would you work with Brent?
Yeah. It'd just be nice to have that seconded to that seat, that would be good, especially since we're tied into the camera now. Okay, any other? Mr. Mayor, I have two things. One, on spring break week, I had the opportunity to spend three days with different areas of the city. I spent a day, almost a full day, with the detectives division at the PD, and was amazed and impressed with what they handle, and how much of what they have to handle, and what they do with their crew, and there to be commended, Chief Stevenson. I also spent a day with the engineer, or a morning with the engineering staff, I met with Ron and Rob, and Ed in engineering, and I learned a ton about what they do, and it just reaffirms that we have such dedicated people. Our department heads are so dedicated, and their staffs, their staff backs them, and it's just phenomenal what they're able to pull off. My third day was with Jason Williams, and down at the public workshop, and again, eye-opening, I encourage all councilors, if you have the opportunity, to go down there and see what these people do on a daily basis, do it, because they're doing phenomenal things, and I just can't say enough how phenomenal our city staffers are, I'm very proud of them. My second item was, last month, we talked about the employee satisfaction survey, and one of the, one of the things was that John was going to come back potentially and have something whipped up for the end of April. Are we on task with that, or is that still, I know a lot of things have been going on, but I'd like to see some sort of an employee satisfaction, so especially now, since?
I can speak to that. Jamie and I have been working on that, I think we can have it for sure for May, for your review, if not before that.
That'd be fantastic. So, Eddie? Thank you, Councilman. Any other council comments?
Can I do attorney comments? Sure. I don't do this, this is the first time for attorney comments, but I was at a district meeting of the baseball association, and officially Lebanon is now known as having the best fields in the state, so I think that's pretty cool. Real big kudos to Jason Williams and the support of this council, so it's great.
Very good.
Long process.
And just one shout-out I'd like to give for the staff, DRL and all the folks who put together the Turning Lebanon Blue, that was a really awesome ceremony, we've got it on YouTube if you missed it, and it was just, it was a really special time. If you watch that video, it's pretty touching. So thank you for the staff that worked on that, I appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
And before we wrap it up, I don't know if John's going to actually be here at our next meeting, or if John Nelson will be here in May.
Well, you might be stuck with both of us, so.
But I just want to make sure, just because not knowing, I just want to tell John, from myself, how much I've appreciated the service you've provided to this community.
Thank you.
And just want to make that a public statement.
Very much my pleasure, thank you.
I agree. Thank you.
And thank you for helping me through the first couple of months.
You're welcome.
Okay, citizens' comments, if we have anybody who wants to do an additional citizen's comment?
I was sleeping earlier.
Sorry to wake you up.
I hope, and I voiced my opinion, but not at the council at the time, about a veterans' home out here. I was involved with the run of the DOWs from the time it started through the finish, I was working for the state at the time. And by the day I didn't have nothing to do, so I went up there to check, and I didn't bring it with me tonight. But the starting monthly rent, $3,700 a month, and it goes up from there if you've got Alzheimer's or dementia or something like that. And they snowed us, just like they snowed GP people, they come in and they said, blah, 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 and we took it in the shorts. The same thing's going to be happening here, because there's a lot of us vets that's not going to be able to afford, if that's where we end up at, to pay $4,700 a month. Sure, there is some V8 portion that will go in to pay, but unless you got a supplement, you're going to be up a creek without a paddle. And they did the same thing to us as they did to you, they come back here, we're like, we need more money. They did the same thing, it's a mirror picture. And I, like I say, we took it in the shorts up there at the DOWs, I was living there for almost 20 years, but anyhow, the City of Lebanon is going to find out the same difference, the vets are going to find out the same difference. Your spouses and your kids go through the loopholes, they can get in there, but they're going to be paying full bore. They don't have the benefit that minor fees will be paid by the VA for the veteran, they're going to be paying full bore. So, it might be interesting for you, but I got an application, but I didn't think about bringing it tonight, but like I say, the minimum starts at $4,700 a month.
Wow.
Which could be higher by the time you finish this.
Did that indicate any level of care, like that there was more care?
Oh, yes, it depended on the care.
On what care?
Like, I am now, I go in there now, I'd be paying $4,700 a month.
Wow, so that's a starting.
If it's the VA would pay a portion, but then the rest is out of my pocket.
Or Medicare, your Medicare picks up. When your resources are expended, and Medicare is what pays for that.
Medicaid?
Medicaid, excuse me, Medicaid is what pays for it.
Medicare, Medicaid only gets it for 90 days.
Medicaid, I'm sorry. So, and that's typical in any assisted living facility or advanced care facility, that's a typical, that's actually an inexpensive one, so.
Not necessarily.
Oh, very much so, yes, sir.
When I was living in the DOWs, it's, like I say, it's immaterial, but Raymond Stepdad was my uncle, and he wanted to go in up there in the DOWs. At that time, it was $2,800 bucks a month. And I said, hey, these people have paid the piper. I thought about how to blame shot out from under your RO2, got busted up pretty good. But still, $2,800 bucks a month for him to go in there. Sure, the VA would have paid a portion of it, but still, it's coming out of your pocket. Either that, or like you're saying, you go on welfare and go on Medicaid.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Thanks. Any other comments? I have one last thing.
You have one more?
I have one, just one. My name is Brian Davis, and I came in, like, you have to forgive me for that, but I just happened to stumble in when you guys were addressing a deal with Jennings Street. And first of all, I want to applaud you and how you handled it. I happen to work for the City of Portland, I live here in Lebanon, and I work for the city's sewer infrastructure. And they would have done the exact same thing. If a city is responsible for the development of residential area, and they screwed up, and 20 years down the road, they find out, we really planned this one poorly, then they take responsibility for it. They'll even go so far as to put people up in hotels if needed, or put outhouses on streets if needed. I see this fairly frequently, actually. But with that said, the contractor has a reasonable offer and rate, knowing bids and rates myself, it's a very reasonable offering rate, but he made something knowing that once or twice a year, we see this type of thing. And I, again, coming in very late, I don't know how many homes, it sounds like just one. It's a whole street full?
Yeah.
Eight altogether?
Yeah.
Okay. Surely by now, we have a trend that's identifiable, if we're seeing one or two a year, with the times of year that those homes had their sewers hooked up, or with the means and methods by which they were hooked up, there's trends that are identifiable, and we could probably by now, I would imagine, just knowing how the sewer systems and infrastructure improvements work, we could identify a large list of homes that were messed up in the planning, in the original planning. We just very recently started a job about a year ago, it's about a two-year project, very similar to this in the city of Portland, where we're going through multiple regions in the city, including homes, beautiful homes, $2 million homes in the West Hills, where we're having to go through people's backyards. And we are making all kinds of adjustments and arrangements and coordination as a city to contact people. We have city outreach people, just to contact homeowners, just to let them know, we're going to be in your area, examining your sewer systems, examining your backyards, tearing up your lawns, replacing bushes and shrubs between this state and this state. And it's all part of the pre-planning, but one of the things that it eliminates and saves you guys, us, the taxpayers, a lot of money, is the fact that we have somebody able to go through and trend. This is what we're normally seeing, this is the region that we're seeing when we're in people's backyards, redoing their backyards, because we've messed up in the planning. And because you can trend it, it's not coming out to you guys as a change order. You can trend it, you can plan 16 or 20 or 40 homes to do in one shot, and you can bid it, and you can have a competitive market. Not to say that this contractor has bamboozled anybody, because I don't believe he has, but I just want to throw this little tidbit out, anytime you can bring four or five competitors to the table.
Well, the original contract, or the original project was out, was put out to bid.
Yes.
So the gentleman who was presenting earlier works for the city, he is not a contractor.
Okay, okay, I apologize, Ron.
And, and, so, the original, the whole project, the scope of the project, and originally, this contractor came in so far under the others, that there was more room, wasn't it, that was part of the discussion, there was more room?
Right.
To be able to do this without it being much of an issue, because we'd already thought it was going to be a more expensive project.
So it was put out to bid, knowing that it was going to be?
Correct.
This is a change order.
Right.
It was a change order bid?
Well, we dealt, well, tonight was a change order.
Right.
To a project we dealt with.
We'd already, and it had already been a very reasonable bid.
Okay, and it was a change order because it was discovered that it was coming through the backyard?
It was known.
Can you talk into the microphone? Ron, thanks.
We can share.
I'll sit by Linda. So, no, it wasn't, it was not a change order. Bid, it was bid out as a normal contract.
Say that again, you coughed.
It was bid out as a normal contract. We knew exactly where the sewer pipe was, we knew exactly what we were doing. What happened was the, our ordinance currently allows for the city to build the lateral up to the property line. In this case, we're switching directions. So basically, we're going from the backyard, because we can't get there to maintain it, to the street. So what we're saying is, that's different than a normal lateral replacement. So, Councilor Reese Camp and several of the property owners brought this to our attention, that, hey, this is going to be a little bit more expensive. So we asked our contractor to develop a change order to pay for the entire piece, where the city would pay for the entire piece of the lateral, as opposed to just bringing it to the property. So that's what you're seeing as a change order.
Excellent, I appreciate your clarification.
So it's normal, it's different than what we would normally do.
Yeah, and it's different than what I had originally anticipated, and thought, sorry about that, I appreciate your clarification, no problem.
So, Ian Bray? Could you? Thank you very much. Was there anybody else that had comments? Okay, I did have one last one that I wanted to update everybody on, the Prothman Group has the brochure finished, we've been editing it and going through reiterations, and there were some things we want to add, make sure that was in there. We trimmed down our letter from the councilors to two pages, down to one page. from the counselors to two pages, down to one page. Linda helped me with that, did a really good job on that, because there's a lot of stuff that was in the brochure that we had in our letter also. So we took that out, where we really have the important part that we were trying to convey in the letter. That'll be available, and I'll send you an email on that, letting you know when that's available. We'll probably be able to go and look and at least see the brochure and take a look at things, so. It looks pretty good. So it's supposed to be posted, I think, tomorrow. Did he?
Well, he was gonna try and post it tonight.
Okay, so it may be tonight. By the time we get home, it actually may be there. And you can actually go to their website, and then there's new listings, and we should be right up at the top, and click on it and see the brochure. So that means, that means they're ready to go, and then they'll be sending out brochures.
Excellent.
So, we're on our way. Any other business? Okay, with that, fine, my gavel. Meetings adjourned.